Good morning.
Good morning.
We're about to start. Just wanted to welcome all of you for being here this morning. I will go through some housekeeping items before we get started. I want to congratulate our City 14 because if you notice, there's not a whole bunch of cables and cameras all around. We have a great system that mimics the one that we have over at City Hall. And because of that, I'm going to ask every single council member to please, when you speak, to try to make sure that you talk to your microphone so that the communication gets through to the people at home. And then in addition to that, if somebody wants to make sure that they want to see what the cameras are doing, if you look at the back of the room, there's a screen back there and you can kind of see what's happening and what people at home are watching. Today...
Assuming somebody is watching.
It is pretty early.
I'm sure that nobody would like to be anywhere else other than here right now, right?
It's the reruns, you know.
Exactly. No, it's, I just want to say thank you to all the fellow council members and the staff for being here so early on a morning on a Saturday. I know that it is a challenge, but it's part of the sacrifice that we do as public servants. Not only us council members, but also the staff, that this is a weekend day for them and they are all here. So just want to say thank you to the department heads and everybody that's here today for your sacrifice. Just a bit of an overview before we have the meeting call to order, just wanted to let everybody at home know that we're excited to start off this budget. I will start by saying that there is no mill levy increase. So if that's what you were waiting for, you could go home. The staff has worked arduously this whole year to take a look at efficiencies and to take a look at how we can make our city a better place for all of you. And as part of that, we will go today through some highlights. I am not going to get into that because our budget manager is going to do that. But just wanted to, again, tell you about a few things that we're going to do in the meeting. So as an old facilitator, I know that teaching adults and working with adults is something that you have people for three hours in a meeting and it kind of gets a little tense or you kind of find yourself trying to find something to do. At your tables, you will find it. Everybody has Play-Doh in their hand, at their access. So if you feel like you are getting a little bit tense or if you feel like you need to do something tactile, there's Play-Doh. I sure know that I will be using it at some points when I'm listening to the presentation. Sorry, City Manager, if you didn't have one, I'd be happy to share mine with you in half. The other thing that we would like to do this year is that there's, there's some times in the meeting that we are having a lot of questions that go a little bit deeper than what we're used to. So again, these are facilitator tools. Tell me if you don't like them for the next meeting, but I want for all of us to be able to say parking lot at any point in time in the meeting. So it's not just going to be me saying parking lot. I think that all of us are adults and if we feel that we're getting into a deep discussion that may be needing some additional information that we feel like staff can provide, not only to us, but put them on the website, if we say parking lot, we have staff that is going to get up, they're going to write down the item that's going to be parking lotted and we will come back to it. And then finally, I just want to say to the public that this has been, seeing us here today really is not a reflection of the budget starts today. This has been a very long process.
Look forward to it. Ready to go.
City Manager.
Thank you. So excellent introduction. I think the, you hit on the two key points. Number one is that there has been a tremendous amount of effort on the part of the staff to prep for this effort. And when we talk about that, we really talk about this concept of continual improvement that we've tried to apply to the way in which the city operates. And we go back and we actually looked at last year's budget meetings. We've asked questions of ourselves as how could we do it better? And I think that what you're going to see hopefully is the output of that, of a, of a process which is, A, operationally focused on best practices, but also reflects how this body operates and anticipate what your questions, what your needs are. And so hopefully this is a very good, seamless and intuitive process as we go forward. Secondly, I think it's very important to understand that, that we understand where we're at from a financial position. We've looked very closely at the revenues. I think we do a phenomenal job at projecting revenues within this organization. And if anything, we're a little bit too conservative and we end up with fairly significant cash flow, our cash reserves at the end of the year that we're able to either add to the fund balances or, as we did this last year, invest it into very important deferred maintenance projects. But we are, we work very diligently to make sure that we bring to this body...
Taking a look at here, at our documents and we start talking about priorities months before we even come here. We're analyzing, we have a full-time budget person that is analyzing our expenditures, that is analyzing our revenue streams, that is working on all of this. Then after that, council gets together and we all decide on priorities. This year, if you take a look at the book for the council members and for all of you at home, if you go to www.tupica.org/budget, you will have the same access that council members have to the book.
Impacts this year and future impacts in the future, going forward.
Please.
Mr. Gerber.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before I start talking about this, I'll just say it's amazing to hear the excitement in everyone's voice. Deputy Mayor, you really set the tone this morning. This is an exciting time, even after 20 years of doing budgets. This is, this is really the best time of the year because it's when we're going to figure out how we're going to impact our citizens for the upcoming year, how we're going to touch their lives and how we're going to make an impact on our city moving forward. So we're excited to be here. Talking about the tax lid legislation, there's been a lot of talk about that across the state and we've had some discussions with council about that as well. The first thing I would point to, you have a handout in front of you and that was prepared by the League of Kansas Municipalities. Not sure which staff member did it, whether Eric did it himself or Eric Smith perhaps might have done it, but it's a, it's a well-done document. It's comprehensive and rather than reinvent the wheel, we decided to put that in front of you and it kind of lays out what I'm going to walk through. The first point I would hit is that there's been some confusion after the late in the legislative session this year, they made some changes. One of those was the implementation date of January 1st, 2017. That's caused a little bit of confusion across the state and even among staffs. That implementation date is January 1st, 2017, but that means budgets adopted after that date. So the confusion was whether or not this particular budget, which is for FY 2017, January 17 to December 17, whether the tax lid is impacted by the budget we're talking about today and in the subsequent weeks. The tax lid does not impact that budget. Not to say that's not on our, it's on our mind, it's on your mind, but we are not officially operating under the tax lid until after the beginning of the year. The other significant change that came out of the legislative session was we went from a five-year or a one-year average of the CIP, CPI, to a five-year rolling average. So that was a significant positive benefit for cities across, cities and counties across the state. So now we're able to rely on a five-year CPI average or rolling average as opposed to the previous one year. I believe we put some numbers in your budget as to what that average has been. It's fairly low at this point, yes.
Mr. Gerber, could you explain for the folks at home what the Consumer Price Index is?
Sure. The CPI is done by the Bureau of Labor Statistics and it's a national average that sort of tries to encapsulate how the economy is doing nationwide. There's a national CPI and then there's a regional CPI, like for example, the Kansas City Metro area has a CPI. And it's just a factor of consumable goods, like, you know, they take some very specific things like this type of apple costs this much now and a year ago or a year previous it costed this much. And then they, they do a comparison. They compare household durable goods, they compare gasoline, heating costs. I didn't really, I don't totally remember all the factors, but there's a number of factors that they compare. And then they just, they do an index of the previous year to the current year and how much the economy is expanding or not.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the other point I think I would want to clarify today is that the tax lid does not prohibit cities from doing a mill levy increase. There's no prohibition against that. What the tax lid does is it requires cities and counties to follow certain steps if they want to do that. And specifically, if you want to raise your mill levy more than the five-year rolling CPI average, then you have to have a special election. So you can do that a number of ways. I won't bore you with the details, but it can be a special election. It can be at the next regular election in August or November, or it can be a mail-in election. So there are options if, if moving forward, this, this policy body ever decides that they'd like to do that. The other thing I'd point out on here is that there's a number of exemptions in the tax lid, which I think are also generally beneficial for cities, whether it's on the revenue or the expenditure side. The biggest among those is the exemption for public safety. So any increases in city budgets, county budgets that relate to public safety specifically do not count against your tax lid increase. So with that, I would summarize by saying that this is not an ideal scenario for most cities, but it is what it is and we're perfectly capable of working within it and working with you to make sure we craft the best budget under the guidelines of this new law. And I'd stand for questions if you have any.
Are there any questions from the council? Mayor will guess.
Thank you. I would suggest that during the year, we, as we develop our budget, that we look at it as if there were a, the tax lid was in effect this year so that perhaps by the end of this year or by fall, we could see, start of that, that process and what it's like to have the tax lid in effect. Does that make sense? So that we could, you know, if it were in effect this year, what effect would it have? How are the exemptions working, et cetera? So my thinking is it'd be good to have that experience so that we go into next year when it is in effect, we know better how, what the, what the differences will be that we haven't taken into consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I think even by the end of this budget process, we could probably provide you with something that, that speaks to that very subject, how, if we were under the tax lid, how this might look.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the body? Comments? Okay, moving forward, we're now going to enter into the budget overview portion of this. Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor, just as a point of housekeeping, we, we may want to adopt the, approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Absolutely. We have in front of us and we have received the minutes of the last meeting of last year. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Mr. Jensen moves. Mr. Cohen seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Now we would move into the detail of the budget overview and for that, we will call on our budget manager, Nikki Lee.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning for being, thank you for being here so early to you and all of the staff. So first of all, you have a few handouts in front of you. Just want to call attention to those so you can make sure to know what they are. On the top, of course, you have the agenda and the minutes. Right underneath that should have been the overview of the tax lid that Mr. Gerber just walked through. Underneath that, and arguably where we will spend the most time today, you'll see a large legal size piece of paper with colors and lines. What that is, this is page 10 of the budget book, which highlights the significant changes to the general fund, but it's got notes to the side and it's a little bit larger so that you can write on this a little bit easier. And so that way you're not flipping around your book as much. I thought it'd be a lot easier to have a handout. So that is right in front of you. And then right underneath that, we have a pile of, you'd see on the top, it says executive department summary reports. So last year, we had a meeting in June, especially to benefit some of the newer council members that really dove into departments. So not just their budgets, but what do we do, kind of give an overview of operations. And we decided this year that there was some really helpful information provided at that meeting. So for now, what we have done is provided, we had each department put together a handout, kind of highlighting their department. And we said, try to focus on things not in the budget book. Don't repeat what you've already got. This one isn't necessarily about the numbers. It's more about the stats and kind of what's new. What are you working on this year? So I know we just gave this to you today, so we don't expect that, you know, you'll, obviously you're not going to read them during the meeting, but if you go back and read them after this and have questions for the next meeting, we can certainly draw more attention to those, but that's what you've got in front of you. Okay, so just quickly, wanted to touch on the actual format of the budget book. What you've got in front of you, as was stated before, is actually posted online as well and also pretty exciting, it's on the budget portal. So for you all and for members of the, of the public that would like to kind of dive in from the portal perspective, so kind of clicking into the expenditures with a website format rather than a PDF that has been loaded to our website, you can get there from the homepage, you can get there from our budget page or just budget.tupica.org. I would say that one focuses more on the numbers in a more interactive way and the budget book kind of gives you more of the story. So to me, it's important to look at them both, but the budget portal is a really, really cool way, very easy to access from a phone for people to kind of get introduced and start to figure out where their questions and interests are. So the budget book in front of you, as was stated, we have been working on this budget process for, I mean, really a year. As soon as you finish the, the last year's budget, you start talking about the CIP, which you all adopted back in April. After this meeting, there will be a series of two more budget committee meetings, which will highlight at the end of this meeting what the next meeting will be focusing on. So the goal would be that by the 28th, which is the third budget committee meeting, we might be at a point to consider any amendments if necessary and then also to approve the budget to the larger governing bodies so that you all approve it so that it can go to the council meeting. And the reason for that timing is that on July 12th, the last of your meetings in July, that's when we need to set the public hearing and the maximum taxes levied. So that's a state requirement that before we get to the budget adoption in August, you all set the public hearing and then you also have to say, our taxes will go no more than X amount of expenditures. That doesn't mean that something can't be changed with budget adoption in August, but the reason you set that then is so that then it's published along with the notice of the public hearings so that everybody is familiar with that. So just a quick overview of your book. Behind the introduction section of the book in front of you, there is some kind of background information, first of all, and very importantly is the city manager's level, which hits on a lot of the themes. And it also calls attention to a lot of the items we'll be talking about that speak specifically to your budget priorities. So that's a pretty good narrative of what's in the book. Also call attention to on page eight is the budget calendar. This is also on the website, so this one does line out what I just walked through really quickly, the budget committee meetings and kind of the next steps with the budget. Pages nine and 11 are probably the most important items in this budget document and these are the overall expenditure and revenue summaries. So ultimately, at the end of the day, you all approving, are approving the maximum expenditure authority with this budget. So what you see on front of you on page nine, eventually that's what will be on the state forms that we officially send to the state and say, we will spend no more than X amount. So this is kind of what brings it all together. And then just really quickly, wanted to walk through the format and the setup of all of the department pages. So if you'd like to turn, for example, to finance, which starts on page 25, the way that each department section is set up is that we've got a summary of the overall expenditures. We explain what fund those are all paid for. So for example, the finance department is all supported by the general fund, but we have many other departments. For example, Public Works that has multiple funding sources. There's a description by division of all of the different units within that department, the FTE count. There's a historical FTE count, so from the past three years and then this additional year, it explains where the FTEs have been and how they've changed. An organizational chart. And then finally, for example, on page 27 is the detailed line item of that budget. So you've got two years of actuals, so what we actually spent, one years of 2016 budget, next to 2017, and then the variance column so that you can easily look at that department and see where the changes were. So what we will be focusing on today and focusing on the general fund are the largest changes to the budget. That's really where I think the time is best spent is to talk about overall in this budget, where have the biggest changes been? So what we'll do is we'll walk through that large handout that you have in front of you, which really, pretty much every department is, is mentioned on that handout. So we'll pretty much get to all of the biggest areas in the budget just naturally by going through that handout. So the goal would be to get through that today and then follow up, if we have any items that go over past our 11 o'clock, then we can continue with the next meeting. So any questions before we get into some detail? Everybody can pull out their large sheet here. And for the public and people behind me, this is page 10 of the budget book. So the way this is organized is this is organized by expenditure categories. So when we look at expenditures, we look at personnel, we look at contractuals, commodities and capital outlay. So this is organized from the largest changes to the smallest changes by category and then the changes on the revenue on the bottom. So the first two items on this list, as long as I've been here, I've been always the first two biggest changes to the budget. And that is full-time salaries and our contribution to health insurance. So the way that we always start the budget year is we first stop and we say, doing nothing else, what do we have to do with this budget? And as you can imagine, there's always from the beginning, more to every budget year standing still. So if we change nothing else and we simply obligate our contracts and do what we need to on the health insurance side, we're going into the year already knowing that we have an increase to the budget. So first of all, full-time salaries, what this is, is this is all full-time salaries for all departments combined into one, one line item. And as you can see, 2017 over 16, that increase is 1.4 million. This is pretty standard, looking back at the last couple of years. It goes up at least a million every year, at least it has for the past couple of years. And what that reflects is, that does include any new positions built into the budget. So we've got documents in here and given some of you guys a preview about the new FTEs in the budget. Of those, six of those are in the general fund and actually technically, two of those in the public works department are also, the costs are shared by other departments. So in total, there are six new positions that touch the general fund in some way, shape or form. And I can get into those in a minute. That also does include, it's a total of 3% increase for management and executive. What that reflects is a 2% cost of living increase, which is consistent with the increase that we had last year. And then that also includes a 1% merit pool. So that's something that we are trying to do better, that we haven't been doing for the past couple of years, is address performance and merit. So we've set some dollars aside to be able to specifically focus them on high performers in the city. And then also, the majority of that increase speaks to the increases in the contracts. So for example, the IFF, the fire contract and the FOP, the police contract that you all saw, really over the last six months, we've been going through all those negotiations. And in those negotiations, we present what the impact would be if that, if that contract is approved. And so then this reflects all of those increases in all of those approved contracts. And then one other that we did want to address that's included in here would be compensation for the governing body as well.
Deputy Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Gerber.
During our budget one-on-ones, a number of council members raised the issue of what it might take to look at governing body salaries for the council and the mayor. And so we thought we would, since we're talking about compensation and personal costs, we thought we would raise that issue right now and give the governing body time to put some thought to that so that maybe by the time we get to the, our last budget meeting, there, if there's an interest from the collective, that there might be then some consensus on what that number might be. The first step in that process, if there is an interest, is to raise it here and to make sure it gets into the budget. And then subsequently, it would need to be in, sent to the council for actual action via an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Gerber. To the council body, do we have comments? I see Ms. Clear.
So is this something we talk about now or do we just go over this paper and then talk about that?
I think that at this point in time, it's been brought up for discussion of the council body and I would welcome comments of council members and the mayor, of course.
I think, I have had some constituents call me and say, you guys don't, you do so much and you don't make enough. And that started, that started me thinking, huh, I wonder if that's true. I mean, I know, I know we do a lot, especially those without jobs. I see the mayor everywhere, see Hillary everywhere, they're always on. The rest of us, I know we have meetings. Now, doing the math, this is my math, someone needs to redo my math. I figured out we make like $9 an hour. I don't know if there's anyone out there that would think that was enough. And I know we're not in it for the money. I know we're, we just want to be public servants, but at the same time, when was the last time there was a raise for the council?
Deputy Mayor, Councilwoman Clear, that, the last adjustment to that was in 2005. And just by way of further clarification right now, I'm sure everyone's aware, but it's $10,000 for city council members and $20,000 a year for the mayor.
And do you know how that goes along with other cities? I know we're above some and below some. You know?
Councilman, we, we can certainly look into that. So again, maybe by the last meeting, we would have some better numbers for you. We don't have any, any direct comparisons right now, but I think you're right on that we're above some and below some.
But there isn't an ordinance or anything that says every few years, you look at the council's pay. Does this just come up because someone brings it up?
Correct.
Correct. City Manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A couple of years ago, we went through the process where we had the citizen review committee that made certain suggestions. We're talking about many of those during the council items. One of the suggestions that was made... One of the suggestions that, that was made was that we did look at, at the compensation for the elected officials. So this is consistent with that activity also.
Ms. Ortiz.
Thank you. Yes, it was raised in 2005 and at 2005, I think they were getting 250 a month. I personally will not ask for a raise. I will let the citizens take it to vote and say if they want me to have a raise because I, I think sometimes, and I understand, I, my calculations are 50 cents an hour. And I understand where everybody's coming from, but I think sometimes people feel like we make too much money. So my support on this would be to take it to the people and let them vote on it like they did last time to vote for us. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is always a delicate issue and no matter what elected body that you serve. And I know a lot of different elected bodies choose to tie it with the CPI that we just talked about a little bit earlier. And so I would like to see if that could be researched, if there are cities that do tie their elected bodies, those salaries and stuff to a CPI index that increases or decreases. So if we could do that, it really, I know those bodies that do that, whether it's legislatures or even Congress, that it takes it out of your hands then of having to vote for yourself a raise.
That's right.
So, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councilwoman. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think part of this conversation really centers around what does our community want from its elected leaders? I love working on the council and working on the various things in the community, but I have to stop making money essentially to do so. And so to some degree, that, that limits the amount of time I'm physically, financially able to spend on council work, on volunteering on things in the community because I have to make money to live. And so to some degree, if we pay the council more, then that should give us the ability to do some more things in the community because financially, we're able to. Whereas, you know, where it sits now, I do as much as I can with the amount of time I can spend away from my job. And I expect that most of you all are in the same boat. So part of the conversation is, what does our community want from us? Do they want us to spend more time working on these issues? And if so, yes, you know, you're going to have to pay us more because we have to live too. So I think that's to be part of our discussion as we get down the road. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Well, Mr. Jensen, when I...
Well, Mr. Jensen, when I took this job, I knew it was part-time. And I think the citizens want part-time council members. You know, this discussion came up ever since 2005, that, you know, we should have full-time council members. And I would love to be a full-time council member, with full-time pay, but that's not what the citizens voted for. And so I will honor their wish. I took that job under that understanding, and I have 19 NIAs, 15 to 19, so, you know, I totally understand.
Councilwoman Jensen, and then we'll go back to Councilwoman Claire.
Thank you. And I do agree, you know, currently, we're set up as part-time council people. I think our community really wants us to be full-time, whether they have come out and said it or not, and just the amount of things that we could do if we were. Now, I'm not advocating for us to become full-time council people. I have a job I dearly love, but maybe three-quarters time or something along those lines.
Councilwoman Claire?
I think my constituents think I'm full-time. I mean, they may want part-time, but they get full-time. And I think because, I mean, you wouldn't be on this council if you weren't a helping person. Because we want to help and because we are there for people, we do it, full-time, most of us. I mean, if you add up the hours, it's full-time, some of us more than full-time. And I know it's a delicate subject, but if you're in a position at a job, you expect a raise. If you do a good job, you get a raise. So it's, I don't think my constituents are going to be upset about this, because it's just, I just think it's the right thing.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Ms. Claire, I do a good job. I work for the state of Kansas, and we haven't had a raise for eight years, not even a cost of living, with all due respect.
At this point in time, I would like to ask for the staff if it would be possible at all for us to have an evaluation for the next meeting of what other municipalities are doing, and if we could also address a CPI formula that is being utilized in other communities. That way, we could just come back to the body with further information on that. Also, we're comparables of other municipalities of our MSA size, so that we could take a look at where we stand. Would the body would be amicable to that suggestion? Thank you. Great discussion. City manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to clarify, so because this got brought up, this isn't in terms of a recommendation on my staff, because this got brought up, we understand that this has to be a discussion to the body, but that will ultimately result in an ordinance and an action taken by this body. We just didn't want to not have a financial consideration given to this early on. So we just wanted to include it in the budget, and we will proceed as you direct it.
Absolutely. This is the perfect time to have this discussion, because if it were to come up later on in the year, it would be kind of difficult to go ahead and work it into the numbers. Councilwoman Hitler?
Deputy Mayor, a question and a comment. The question is, are we going to go back through and go through these departmental budgets? Because we, as a council, haven't addressed our council budget yet. Will we do this later?
We will have a discussion today of the overview, and then we will go into details in the next two meetings.
Later, okay. The comments would be that I don't know that I've ever compared notes with everyone, but for us to think about that, and even staff in those other communities, I don't know what other costs are covered or provided by those cities. But many of us spend a lot of time driving around, buying our own tickets to all the things that our constituents want, making contributions here and there to various things. And I suspect that most of us spend all that money on this job, rather than, you know, live on it. And so that might be something for each of us to consider ourselves, as we consider what's reasonable about those dollars. I also did note that something we've talked about the last number of years, actually, is putting some training money in, so that at least we can all feel like we can do a good job and not have to spend our own money to go get some training. And that's not in here yet, so if that comes up later, I, it is? Oh, I couldn't, I looked for it.
We took that out of the budget. We had training and took it out.
Well, it's not there. It's only 1,500 bucks for the whole council.
Councilwoman Hitler, those points are very well taken. I think that at this point in time, unless we have any other questions with regards to this issue, we can proceed with the overview. Ms. Lee?
Let's just clarify that real quick. On page 18, we did add $12,000 to council training, yeah.
Great.
So we can talk about that more later, but I guess the idea was to put enough in there that it'd be enough to cover several big trainings or a little bit for everybody, but that is built into the budget.
Thank you. I looked in the 2016 column. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, so part of those full-time salaries, as I mentioned, were six new positions. And as we've explained and talked to a lot of you about, we're very, very conscientious and careful before any new positions are added to the budget. There's a very long vetting process. Where possible, we like to take existing positions and reallocate, so these are not, these don't get into the budget very easily. And we believe that the new positions that are in the budget really speak to council priorities or their items that really were contractually obligated to do. So the six positions that do relate to the general fund, two are in the Technical Services Group in the Public Works Department, and that group, that's the group that does all of our GIS mapping and our asset management. For a very long time, they operated with four positions. They had a few scattered throughout the utilities. We're kind of putting a new focus on this group, because you've seen from a lot of the presentations we've made to you with maps, with the CIP, and with our assets, we can't get to where we want to be with our streets and our utilities and our overall asset management without the people there to do that. The good thing about these positions is that we actually spread the cost of these positions over all of the major departments and utilities. So the general fund share at this point's only actually 16% of these positions. Water, stormwater, wastewater, really anybody that's impacted by the asset management and the mapping pays in to help pay for these positions. There are two new zookeepers built into the budget, and that is to continue to meet appropriate standards in zoo and animal care, and also in anticipation of the Zoo Master Plan and future zoo expansion. We simply felt like it was time to expand the number of staff that we have in the zoo. And then additionally, there's two positions in fire, so for several years, you all probably have etched in your head, 245, 245, that's the number of people in the fire department. We are at the point right now where we believe we need to have a special focus on the medical care side of our fire department, since the majority of our calls are related to EMS, emergency medical-type positions. So we actually have an Emergency Medical Services Director built into the budget that will oversee those operations, and also a training officer that would assist that person in making sure that we're having good quality control, good training on all of the state requirements that our fire department needs to be trained in. So that concludes my comments about the full-time salaries. And what I'll do is I'll pause after each of these items to see what follow-up questions there are.
Does the body have any follow-up questions? Councilwoman Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last year, in looking back at the minutes and stuff, we, and I don't know if this is appropriate time for it, but I know that I added a grant writer or grant consultant that we did. So I'd like a report on the grant issues with the city. I don't know if, you know, that needs to be done at a later meeting, but we did add, what, 60,000 last year for grant writer. So I'd like kind of a report on that and where we're at with our grants and writing grants.
Sure. If you don't mind, we'll include that in the Q and A follow-up to this meeting. Thank you. And that is, that position is still in the budget.
Councilwoman Claire?
I don't know if this is the right time either, or wait till we get to the individual, but on the comp time callback pay for fire, did we, did we not address that in their contract, and we were really trying to lower that amount, but it has increased?
I can go ahead and speak to that item. Okay. So let's see, though. The fifth item down is related to callback, and you can see that increases 193,000. And just so you know what callback is, is that's used to meet minimum staffing. So if there's ever a situation where, in the fire department, for whatever reason, and this could be, someone is sick, someone's doing training, someone is out, that we need to meet minimum staffing, then we use what's called callback pay to make sure that we have the right employees in the positions where we need them to be. And it's been updated in the '17 budget to better match actuals. So we have been really under-budgeting this line, and I think to your point, with the goal of addressing callback, and where possible, have our staffing to where it need to be, and have the situations where we need callback under control and kind of restricted where they need to be. And I'd say, at this point, we just realized that we've been under-budgeting that line, so it's time to simply bring it up to where it needs to be. So now, what you see it as reflects how much we've really been spending.
So how does the callback pay compare with pay? I mean, is it double time, time and a half? How does that compare?
I couldn't tell you that 100% off the top of my head. We can maybe-
Would there be a parking lot item, so that we could go ahead and come back to it and have the information? City manager?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Claire. So we want to come back with this item and really kind of give an overview. We do believe it's one of the elephants in the room. Unfortunately, Chief Wayne has had a longstanding commitment for today and Wednesday that he's not able to participate. So we've, we're challenging him to come back and kind of give an overview of where we stand on many of these items. But your original question is right on, managing that is absolutely vital. The whole concept of overtime and callback and all that is one of the things that we need to address. Nikki had made a statement that this is where it needed to be. It's not where it needs to be, it's where it is. And so we wanted to recognize the reality of the financial situation is today, but we want to continue to address that going forward. But with your permission, we'll put it in the parking lot, but it really isn't a parking lot, it's a planned conversation to have a little bit.
And quickly, my handy audience back here did clarify, it is time and a half is the rate.
Well, if I may?
Yes.
I'm glad, I'll comment, I'm glad to see us increase that, because it's long overdue by nobody's fault, other than by statute, we have to have so many people on a truck, you know? And we can't control fires. We can't control if one staff comes in and another staff leaves, you know, or needs to leave, that they have to stay over. Just like when we had some of those big fires on the different sides of towns, they can't just walk off the job and leave. So I'm glad to see that we've increased this.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Emerson, Councilwoman Emerson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Nikki, I just had a question, because I went through the book, well, most of the book last night, and maybe this is going to be on all these, but the number, so you have a comp time callback pay here of 545,096. And in the book, when you go to the detail sheet, it doesn't, it's 496,059, unless there's some other, maybe this is consolidating several numbers, I don't know. Is that going to be the case everywhere?
Yes, thank you. So I meant to clarify that from the start, is just kind of explain the setup of this page. So what you see in the 2017 budget column is the aggregate of every department throughout the book that's got that item. So like, for example, on this callback line, that's grabbing that account for every single department in the general fund that's got that. And then, as you go to the right, where you see the increase and the decrease, and then the column that labels who that's for, like, for example, on this one, it says fire. It may actually be that a small amount of that change is attributed to another department. I've simply put the department here that's responsible for the majority of it.
Okay.
And I'll try to explain that throughout where that happens, but you're right, you can't open necessarily to the fire department and see those same numbers. It's just they are the ones driving the biggest change.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking that question.
Any other questions, comments from the body? You can move forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman Claire. We got another one. I can check that one off the list, just took care of two in one item. Okay, next, we go down to employer contribution for health insurance. As you can see in the general fund alone, this is at this point, an $844,000 increase, 17 over 16. So this is one of the biggest impacts to our budget, of course, is the cost of our healthcare. And this is the amount that the city, so the employer contributes towards the plan. Of course, employees that are on the plan contribute as well. And at this point, we are budgeting for a 13.5% increase over 2016 actuals, which actuals were higher than the original budget. So what we do every year is we set the budget amount, but we don't actually get our renewal rates from all of our benefits and our benefit consultants until about July. And the reason is, they need to wait for as much history in the year as they possibly can before they're coming to us and saying what next year's rates are going to be. Well, we, of course, need to be setting that a lot earlier in the budget, so we know how much to set aside. So our budget amount is rarely what the actual amount is. And for example, in 2016, our rates came in a little bit higher than we'd originally budgeted. The main reasons for the increase that you see in 2017, one would be just simply the costs of healthcare, which any of you that deal with that, maybe in your businesses or personally, are pretty familiar with. This is something that's happening everybody, everywhere, especially on the prescription drug side, even generics, we're seeing costs of these are just skyrocketing. In addition, unfortunately, in 2015 and so far in 2016, we've had some very high claims years among our employees. And we will be diving into this a lot more on June 28th. That's the third Budget Committee meeting. We plan to focus on the health fund and any other funds. So we will give you a report, for example, on the wellness clinic and the impacts that's had. And we'll also talk a lot more about, we can dive as much into the healthcare as you all want to. At this point, we're hoping that we're being conservative and putting more in the budget than we need. We won't know for the next couple of months, but we'd rather put more than less. Additionally, one important item to note is that we will also be talking to you as a governing body pretty soon about where we are with our cost-share negotiations with the union. So if you're not aware, we have a negotiating requirement with all the seven union groups and the staff sit together and decide what the cost-share rates will be. So for example, this year, employees pay only 3% of their healthcare and the employer, so the city pays 97%. That's a negotiated item that we sit down with every year. And at this point, we haven't come to an agreement. So that's another unknown at this point that we're hoping to solidify pretty soon, but right now, we'd rather just assume higher than we think that we need.
Yes, Councilwoman Claire?
Can you tell me the number of employees that you contribute health insurance for?
I'm going to follow up with you on that exact number, only because we have a total number that includes some retirees and current employees. I know it's around 900, but I'm going to send you the final one. But on that note, something really important to know is that when we have vacancies, so for example, when we set the budget, we had about 50 vacancies, we do budget, because we have to assume that those people might be coming in on our plan. So we always know we're budgeting more than we're probably going to be spending, because you have to assume that everybody, all of those people will be on. But let me send you the exact amount, if that's okay.
Councilwoman Hitler?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for making commitment that this will come back on the 28th for more of a deep dive. When we do that, could we, I know there are lots of moving parts in this healthcare system that add into this number. We thought, those of us that have been on for a little while, that we were right on top of cost containment for healthcare, at least I did, and that the clinic process was supposed to plateau and then reduce our expenses, so we invested in that. I really am interested in that, how each of those moving parts are working, and we also thought it would make our, I know it's early in that long-term plan, but that we could reduce the incidents and the healthcare expenses for our employees overall. So I'm surprised to see it go up, and, you know, concerned, of course. Also, though, the 13.5%, if that could be recalibrated into what difference that means in terms of, I mean, if it's 97%, it's going to stay that way? I mean, like, 13.5% of $100 is 13.50, but of 10 bucks is just a dollar and some change. So I'm not, you know, per employee, what does that 13.5% mean?
Mr. Gerber?
If I may, just for the body's reminder, the clinic, we do believe, is going to be a positive for our employees. But we have to keep in mind, whether it's the clinic or, you know, employees we added for Public Works last year, in both of those cases, we're very new into the process. The clinic is, has really not even been open for a year, hasn't been open for a year. And so, not to make any sort of grand promises, but I think it's very early to be seeing the sort of cost savings we might be expecting in the future. Additionally, I think anyone recognizes who's been through this, that when you have a clinic that opens up, one of the things that often happens is- a clinic that opens up, one of the things that often happens is people go and they find things that maybe they hadn't seen before. And so there is always the potential of an initial escalation in cost, which should plateau then, once it gets treated appropriately.
I'll go to Councilwoman Schwartz and then we'll come back to Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you Madam Chair. And I try, I was on that committee and really spearheaded a lot of this discussion to do the clinic and the HRA's health risk assessments. I've seen this happen before with other employers and what happens, as Doug said, is the woodwork effect. You have people who have not really been getting healthcare, now getting healthcare. You, we also will be moving, and I've, you know, tracked with Jackie and Michelle and the entire committee as to when we will start doing the health risk assessment categories. And that's what Olathe and other cities that are using this, that's why they're saving lots of money. And those health risk assessment categories means that an employee, based on their health risk and their assessment, they are placed in a certain category. And then their goal is to, to improve, to, to have their health actually improve. So it's not that we just have a free clinic. We have a clinic that is helping people to improve their health. And I've been assured that probably next year, we're going to move into that aspect. And for people that improve their clinics, like Olathe that's doing this or Salina, they actually have bonuses for employees that improve. So you're watching your blood pressure, you're watching everything that needs to be done. So the first year is always expected to have a little bit of a woodwork effect, but we will move into, Olathe, I think, if I'm not incorrect Nikki, they get $6 back for every dollar they invest in their program.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. And again, just a deep dive to understand that, whether it's, we've got a lot of people that we're retaining with major illnesses, or whether it's preventive care or attending to long-term things, just to understand. Also, you touched on something, I mean, if the 13 and a half percent is because we've added employees, that helps to explain it to me as well. I mean, whatever that really means is what I was asking.
Any additional comments from the body or questions? Okay, we can proceed.
Okay. The third item on here is employer retirement reserve contribution. There's a little bit of discussion about this in the budget book. So what that is, is that we have a designated fund set up to handle payouts when employees retire. So we have, with our personnel code, it designates when an employee retires, how much we pay of the vacation time, how we pay out comp time. And as you can imagine, sometimes with long-term employees, just like any government entity, they build up, they can potentially build up an impact that would be a big impact on the budget in one given year. So the way that we handle that is actually, for every dollar that we pay towards an employer, towards an employee's pay, their whole career with the city, we're actually, as a city, contributing a percentage of that pay into this fund to plan for the future. So for a non-KPNF employee, we pay 2.25% on every dollar we kick into a retirement reserve fund to be able to help pay for that employee's future costs. We pay a little bit more on the KPNF side, it's 2.75% because, simply because they have larger payouts when they retire. We increase to those percentages I just stated this year because we will be expending through the employee separation fund. For those of you that were here in 2013, we were coming up to a large bubble of employee retirements. And at that point, our funds were all in some pretty terrible situations where we knew that we couldn't handle the, the cost that they would have on our budget. So we actually took out bonds to finance for the next couple of years of retirements. That was in 2013. We're expecting to have paid through that in 16. So we've had a very, very large group of retirees that we will run through that fund. It is our goal, we never want to borrow money again to pay for retirements. That's, it's allowable, but it's, it's not a practice that you would like to continue. So in order to prepare for that and to prevent for that, we needed to increase the amount that we were paying for ourselves for these future payouts. So what that impacts in this budget is $400,000 increase over last year. This is simply good financial planning. This, this needs to happen, so we're not in the position in future years.
Mr. Emerson.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. Nikki, on that, is there, I guess, are there other implications for that? I know for capers, what is it, your last two years or something determined, is there, is there some, I guess, is there some gains going on there that if you keep that, does that count then and you can up, up retirement and everything? Is there an impact other than just that year's money? I mean, should this be things we're paying out every year to people and cashing out every year?
Okay, if I'm understanding your question, this is actually, this money is money that we're putting into our own fund. So we are transferring it from whatever fund that employee's paid out, for example, the general fund, into the retirement reserve fund. And then, once they get whatever payout it is, per, per the personnel code, it's paid out of that fund. So I think to the employee, they don't know what fund they're getting paid out of, and there's really no way that can be manipulated. They're making that money no matter where we're paying it from. I don't know if that answer, if that makes sense.
I just didn't know, why don't we just, ever, at the end of every year, if you have 30 days accrued, why don't we just pay everybody that money? Is there a reason we don't do that instead of having this kind of unbudgeted amount hanging out here that we don't know from year to year?
Deputy City Manager.
Deputy Mayor, thank you Councilman. Certainly, some cities do approach those future liabilities that way, and they have policies whereby, at the end of every year, you get a portion of your vacation or a portion of your sick leave without leaving yourself vulnerable for the next year in case you need to have vacation or sick leave that you can use. That's certainly a policy and a philosophy. The philosophy in the city of Topeka is that we fund from our operating budget towards those future liabilities. And as Nikki said, we're, we're trying to bolster that fund so that we don't put ourselves in a precarious situation in the future. So, but it, it's certainly a possibility, it's just not the way Topeka has traditionally approached it. Nikki's whispering, a good point in my ear. We, we do, in terms of both contractual obligations and the personnel code, there are maximum limits set on both vacation and sick leave, so that also helps mitigate that risk a little bit.
Okay.
One more clarification, capers is the final three years rather than the final two years.
And do amounts, do these amounts go into that calculation?
No. Councilman, which, which amounts, I'm understanding you-
So if you get, if you have $100,000 saved up in these, and I don't know what the amounts are, I don't know what kind of amounts you're talking about for employee, but does that then go into your retirement? Or is that not considered?
Mayor will guess.
I think the, the issue, because we call this retirement, we're thinking that this is part of your capers, of your retirement you get for the rest of your life. But that's not what this is, correct?
Yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe the confusion is even the title. It's kind of like our future liability reserve. This is for the city to save up money for those payouts that we make on those employees. So it doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with the calculations of their retirements.
Okay, okay.
Right?
Right.
It's a payout for your unused sick leave?
Yeah.
Is it?
Maybe I can try to clarify this. The money that's in this retirement fund and previously the, I'm not sure what we called it, but the other fund that we took out bonds for, is in case we have, and in fact, when we do have, employees that retire across the city, so that we're able to fund their benefits due to them that they've earned at retirement, whether it's sick leave, whether it's vacation, whether it's their final payout.
That's it.
There's a number of factors that go into it. And that's what those monies are used for. That way, it doesn't come out of individual departments' operating budget and impact routine operations.
Any, Mr. City Manager.
Just to clarify, you asked a question right at the end, does, does that payout count towards the capers retirement amount? The answer is yes, it does. Capers, capers takes the average of the last three years of your salary, and if you were to have a, a pension spike, you had, that number was very high, but you said $100,000. But if you were to get certain payouts, that would be included into the final numbers.
Wow.
Councilwoman Clear.
So not to jump ahead, but then the next one's the sick and vacation. Is that not, is that just for when people are sick and vacation, it has nothing to do with when they leave?
Yeah, so then, this is, this is good, you're tying this all together for me. Thank you. This next one that you see here, this really doesn't have anything to do with any of those. This really is an accounting entry that we're getting away from, per the change to how we're budgeting for items. This was simply an accrual that we used to budget for, so you could see in the 16 budget, it was like a negative 300,000. And that had to do with an internal accounting entry that we make for liabilities of people's accrued sick and vacation time. It's not a payout, it's simply an entry that really, we won't be really showing on the budget side anymore. So that's really a technicality, but it may look like it's related, but really it's not.
Any other questions from the body? Seeing none.
Thank you. Callback, we touched on that. Comp training, so this line here looks to be an $89,000 increase. And what this is, is that per some of our contracts, we actually have employees that get compensated for having certain level of degrees, so an associate, a bachelor's and master's degree. This is not new, we're simply accounting for it differently to be more transparent. It used to be, this was just included in their full-time salary calculation, we would just add it in with what that person's making because that's, you know, it's part of their paycheck. But in order to make it more visible, how much we do pay out on items like that, we've designated it into its own account. So year over year, like I said, it looks like it might be an increase over 16, but actually, it's the same rates. It's just we're simply accounting for it in a different way. As is stated here, this is in the municipal court and police because it's in the FOP contract, and then also fire due to IAF.
Did I see that was in municipal too?
Yes, so we actually have a municipal court, we have public safety officers, those are the ones that run our security, and they are part of the FOP contract.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering why it was there.
Uh huh. Any other questions?
Okay. Okay. And then the last one on this list is the capers contribution. So capers rate are provided to us by the state, and this is their rates that they're set, that they set for what we need to contribute for every employee. So just like with the retirement reserve, you're probably all familiar with, every dollar that we pay an employee, we also contribute towards capers. Actually, the actual rate is going down from 9.18% in 16 to 8.97% in 17. So the rate itself is going down, but we're actually paying more into the fund because as we have an increased full-time salaries, we're going to be paying more in our capers contribution.
Questions on that? Okay.
Okay, I did not mean to, but I'm sorry, I skipped over overtime, is that what you were going to say?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Overtime, so the overtime line increases by 75,000 in this budget, and again, that's all departments combined. The majority of this is, you will find, in the police department, a lot of this is because as we're paying employees more, they're actually, since their rate is higher, they're making more in overtime. But also on the police side, there's multiple kind of compensation accounts for different types of overtime. To you, it might seem like overtime, but technically, there's differences. There's overtime, there's standby, there's callback, there's multiple different categories for when an employee works more than their normal shift. So actually, in TPD, they decreased a couple of those other items. So overall, their items aren't increasing by this much, but the specific item tied to overtime does increase by this amount.
Councilwoman Clear.
Is any of this overtime due to not being up to staff, being undermanned in TPD?
Yes, City Manager, just bringing up Chief Brown. Welcome Chief Brown.
Thank you ma'am. Councilmember Clear, so in the overtime for police, that $75,000, we did completely away with the hazardous duty pay, and we decreased our standby pay. So this is not an increase that we're asking from the governing body. This has just taken our hazardous duty pay and our standby pay and moving it to, to overtime. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Does any of this affect our special units, when we put together special units for, you know, like the gangs or different, does any of that affect this?
Yes, so during contract negotiations, we decided, as a police department, that that, for example, hazardous duty pay. We would rather see the money be utilized for, example, a month ago when we had three officers shot during that warrant, and then the subsequent fire of the hotel, that was a large amount of overtime-
Exactly.
-that night for that one event. And to be able to forecast those type of events, we have to be prepared for those type of events. But they consume a lot of manpower and a lot of dollars for that one specific event.
And so this is what helps on that, is that correct?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wondered how that worked because, excuse me, within the last year, we've had a lot, you know, with Hi-Cres, with the shooting out there. Continually, we're, we're still out there with special units, with the gang shootings and stuff like that. So I'm glad to see this then.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much Chief Brown.
All right, the next section, we get down into really what we call as our contractual items. So this, the contractual category does serve as a little bit of a catch-all for a lot of our kind of expenditures. It's things that we're paying to outside agencies, things that we're paying to ourselves. So really, other, everything other than people or stuff falls into the contractual category. So on the top of the list, there is our own contributions to our internal service fund IT. So just as a little bit of a background, and there's more information in the book about how we fund our IT department, but our IT department is set up as an internal service. So we actually charge ourselves based on the department's number of employees, number of computers, and all of the other technical support that they have. Every year, we annually reconfigure how much all of those departments need to pay in to our own IT fund for the support. And the IT fund increases, as you can see, over the 16 budget increases 307,000. This is not, this does not mean that we're increasing our IT operations by that amount. What this is reflecting is that we've actually reallocated in an appropriate way where those charges are occurring. So for the past couple of years, we have been charging other funds, so the utility funds, street fund, more than really was there due to be able to protect the general fund. And we're at the point right now where we're, overall in the budget you'll see in for the past couple of years, we're wanting to shift everything more appropriately. We no longer want to be charging other funds less or more than they should be paying, it needs to be based on a formula. So actually, this is bringing us to the point that we should be. Additionally, they did have a small increase to their budget of just a 2% to be able to keep up with some increasing costs, but in the general fund, this is kind of a, a large impact in one year. Future years, this should be a smaller amount because we made a pretty large shift in just this one year.
Councilwoman Clear.
So you put shifted from other funds, so the other funds went down, decreased?
Yep, so for example, if I go to the water department IT fee, you'll see a pretty significant decrease from 16 to 17 because it was, they had been paying more than their share to protect some of the general fund departments.
So what is the actual increase? Because if you shift from here and put it here, does it balance or is there really an increase?
Sure, so overall, the IT fund did increase by 2% over the prior year.
Oh, I see, overall fees?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
We've been, thank you. We've been adding a lot of features to some software that we already had and have been adding others, such as the budget portal and, and so on. Are all of those software expenses, installation and maintenance expenses in IT, or are some of them still in departments?
Okay, I can clarify that. So generally, it depends. I would say if we have department-specific softwares, usually departments are actually paying for those items. For example, Socrata, we are actually paying for out-of-finance- For example, Socrata, we are actually paying for out of finance because it's for the open checkbook portion and the portions related to performance, that would be more of a finance-related. Additionally, the expenses for Lawson, which is our ERP, our enterprise research support programming, we actually pay the majority of that annual fee out of the general fund. So the IT fund pays for kind of the software, the security, the website, so the kinds of supports that, the kinds of items that affect the whole city, that would include the IT staff as well. But anytime there's a software that's department-specific, that will usually be paid by that specific department.
Mr. Gerber.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. I want to pick up on a point Nikki mentioned in terms of shifting IT costs appropriately. It's a good story. For one thing, it's a best practice and it's something we should be doing. We've done a cost allocation model and I think that's very appropriate. But secondly, I think maybe an even more important point is as we move into a potential conversation about rates for our utilities, I think it's beneficial if we're not using the utilities as a cash cow for the general fund, but instead making sure that they're absorbing the costs that they're supposed to absorb and not other costs just because it was an easy budgeting practice at one point.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions with regards to this line item? Okay, we proceed.
So that leads us very nicely into server licenses. This is actually the support for our Lawson annual maintenance. We are actually doing an upgrade right now as we speak. Hopefully, it's going well. It's literally happening right now. And the costs from 2017 over 16 are actually increasing by more than a usual annual increase amount because we are going to the cloud. So it will now be hosted by a Lawson rather than by ourselves. So there's probably a lot more technical behind that, but in the long run, this should mean that we have less of the support on that end from our own funds, but it does increase our annual costs.
Mr. Emerson.
I think Mr. Jensen maybe was.
Nope, nope.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is this gonna be this much in perpetuity? I mean, or is this a one-time?
Let me follow up. I know we have, I think we have a five-year rates from them and I believe that the first couple of years are larger jumps and then afterwards, we should see smaller, but if you don't mind, let me send that to you for sure rather than assuming right now.
And I guess the hope is we now will need less hardware, we'll need less so.
Less energy, a whole nine yards.
Yes. Would you mind if I follow up with some?
Absolutely.
Someone that's smarter than me to answer that?
It's impossible.
They're nodding.
Okay, any other questions with regards to this line item? Okay, we can proceed.
So individual and contractual services, as I stated before, there are some line items in this category that kind of serve as a catch-all. So individual contractual services is 52200 as you're looking through the book. And that serves a lot of different reasons. Departments might use that for different studies that they have going on, for payments that they have for outside entities. And as you can see, in this year, it is going up by $100,000 and that is for a couple of reasons, one of which I think is a very good story that speaks to some of your priorities. So as it states here, this is primarily municipal courts. That's a little bit misleading. Actually, $45,000 of this is municipal court. So of that $100,000, I should have used a softer word than primarily municipal court. They kind of had a moment of, whoa, we're not going up $100,000, so sorry about that, Judge. But actually, of, this first budget, I had to just kind of test him and see if he was watching. So of that $100,000, $45,000 of that is actually in the municipal courts department in continued support of our alternative sentencing court. So I think a lot of you have heard an update of this and we'll certainly be telling you more about it. You can find a lot of information about it. But what that is, is that's our program that we work with certain individuals that we believe shouldn't go to jail. Most of them have different mental issues or other issues. They're kind of that in-between. They need some kind of sentencing and oversight from the courts, but we don't want to just throw them in jail necessarily. This is a very targeted program. You'll see in your handout from municipal court that last year, we had 29 individuals that went through the program. So it's not necessarily a large amount of individuals, but it's a very intensive, it takes a lot of work with, it takes a lot of one-on-one work with these individuals. So the $45,000 reflects a partnership that we have with Valeo. We've been working with them and they basically said to continue the program, keep it at the high level and to continue on kind of our momentum in the program, they need a little bit of support to help pay for their employees that are working on the alternative sentencing court. So this is to help us continue doing the program. Other than this $45,000, we actually have some information. We actually put, it's about $150,000 of our own staff time into the program, whether it be our police officers that oversee the program, whether it be the time of the judge and Judge Schwartz and also our ASC coordinator. There's a lot more that goes into the program than just this amount, but this is the amount that we've agreed to pay an outside entity.
Ms. Lee?
If I may interject, the cost of an inmate is approximately $40,000 a year as a burden.
And for us to consider that 29 individuals have gone through this program that we have been able to keep out of the system and that we've been able to provide additional support systems that assist our community in being a safer place and for these individuals to have a second chance is just remarkable, just to comment.
Councilwoman, clear.
Were we paying this before? Were we paying anything before?
So good question. We have been doing this program since 2015 and both ourselves and Valeo have had some grant support to be helping to support it and those grants are ending. And we're working on, just to answer, I know Schwartz is thinking it, we are working on actually pursuing grants, so we're hoping that maybe we won't even need this full amount and that we would get grants to continue the support of that. But a lot of the grants that they received, the point of them is to start new programs and be a one-time, let's get this program started and then after that, you need to take care of it. So we can't necessarily go to the same pots of money for what supported it the first couple of years, but we did actually start it and we are paying for it right now with grants.
City Manager.
Deputy Mayor, with your permission, because I think this is such a significant program and that this grant is important to continue the program, but also the statement is absolutely correct that we are attempting to get some additional funds, but the timing just isn't going to work. But with your permission, I'd love to invite Judge Guyer up to chat just a little bit about this and how he sees this thing playing out going forward.
Absolutely. Judge Guyer.
It's his first meeting, so we're picking on him. Judge Miller would have already been up here.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you want to have. I do want to speak to what Deputy Mayor De La Isla said. We haven't had, since this was started in 2015, I do believe we've saved the city a lot of money on jail time. We have not had 29 graduates, however. It is a year-long program, so several of those folks are still going through the program. Unfortunately, some fail. So there is the potential that some may have to serve some underlying jail time. However, I can still tell you that there has been a significant savings, that a lot of these folks are not going to jail, they're getting the services that they need. And now that we've hit that one-year mark, everybody's in the program for a year as long as they stay on the course. And we're now starting to see the graduates and we're really starting to see the fruits of what Judge Miller started in the alternative sentencing court.
Councilwoman, clear.
What was the percentage of those sent to those that are gonna graduate? I mean, what's our success rate?
I can quantify that in two different ways. I don't have the exact numbers for you now and I'll be sure to get those for you. I can tell you that within the past two weeks, we've had, we've had three graduates. We get new, I think we're averaging two or three per week that are now entering the program. So as far as the percentage that have graduated, I couldn't tell you. I would estimate it, it's a little bit lower, I think, than the folks that started it wanted to see. So I'd probably put it at approximately 50%. However, what I would like to tell you is this, and I'm trying to get these numbers nailed down for you. Folks that enter into the program, as I said, it's a year-long program. They come every week, they meet with us, they meet with Valeo, probation officers, defense counsel, prosecutors. Folks that don't graduate from the program and we ask to leave, or maybe they don't feel like it's a good fit for them any longer, we have noticed, even though they don't graduate, they tend not to reoffend. So if you're looking at success rates based solely on what we call graduations, I think that's maybe a little misleading because I think certainly folks that don't graduate from the program seem to don't have the same levels of recidivism.
Wonderful. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Judge, my son-in-law was the drug court administrator for a while with Shawnee County. Are you working with the county in some of these? I'm sure a lot of them are possibly repeat offenders or whatever.
As I said here today, the answer is no. I hope to tell you on Wednesday, the answer is yes. If Judge Wilson's watching, she doesn't know the purpose of our meeting on Monday, but that's the purpose of our meeting on Monday. I'm going to meet with her on Monday to try and see if we can partner some way with the county on this. And additionally, going back to the grant funding, there's a tremendous grant out there that by ourselves, I'm not sure is a good fit, but if we were able to partner with the county, I think it would really help both the county and the city and take care of a lot of needs and expand the program.
Thank you.
Your son-in-law's a good man, by the way.
I agree.
Judge Guyer, any other comments that you would like to close on?
No, thank you. I'll just say this, obviously, this was started by Judge Miller and our former head of probation, Kathy Walker, really put a lot of effort into this. You know, I came into it about 10 months in. We didn't have anything like this in the county. I came from the county. And it is a tremendous program and I'm a huge advocate for it.
Thank you. I think this is a perfect time. It's 9:30, almost 9:30. I think it's a great time for us to take a small break. If the body would like a recess, it is 9:25, if we could all be here by 9:35, that would be excellent.
The seat lifted, I sat down on my table. I am so happy since the microphone was up so low that I didn't say anything.
These chairs are okay. They're not great. You know, they always say there are one-our chairs, two-our chairs.
Yeah, yeah, just keeping tabs on the internet.
No, no.
It's a way of correcting them if I, if they don't tweet exactly what I say.
Okay. I think all council members are now accounted for. And the City Manager is receiving his Play-Doh. At the end of the meeting, I will see what works of art we have. I have my rose.
I meant log.
You have a log. Just trying to keep it light throughout the meeting. I know this is a long process. Thank you so much for coming back from the break when we needed to. We're trying to keep the meeting moving. It's a Saturday and I want to make sure that everybody that's here is able to get back to their lives and to their other activities that they have slated. I will, however, take a look at what City Manager Colson is going to do with his Play-Doh.
It's purple, I'm gonna give it to Doug.
Mayor Wolgas, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
I was just thinking in terms that council members Ortiz and Harmon, this is your 12th budget process. For Councilwoman Hiller and me, it'd be our eighth. So sometimes we look a little bit jaded or something. Maybe we've heard this before, but anyway, it is a process and certainly for the new ones going through it the first time, the second, third year, it's a great learning experience. And we see the difference, how it has changed over the years. Very interesting. Very, very, so many good improvements.
Thank you, Mayor Wolgas. That being said, Mr. City Deputy Manager Gerber approached me earlier and he said that he wanted to just start up with some statements.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. Just by way of clarification, I think we maybe were, not to re-confuse ourselves, but we made a couple of statements regarding capers in retirement, particularly in response to Councilman Emerson, that weren't, that need clarification. The first of those is that the legislature did change the law on retirements such that if you were hired after July of 1993, those lump sum payouts no longer apply to your final average salary. So what we obviously have in the city is people who are retiring now are typically those who were hired before that date. And so it, it will impact their final average salary. But for those of us hired under, after that time, it would not impact us. Also, just one minor clarification, capers takes your final three highest salaries. It's not your last three years, it's your three highest. Typically, that's going to be your last three years, but it could be you did awesome in your first year and made a lot and that would be calculated in if it was one of your three highest.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Ms. Lee?
All right, so we are at the facility fee line on your handout. This is another internal service fund where we pay ourselves for the support of our facilities. This is not only the maintenance of our facilities, but the custodial work. Starting in 2014, this became its own fund. It used to be simply a function of Public Works and we decided that we wanted to really designate these activities, really track how much we're spending on our facilities and made it its own fund. So this is again, something that we charge out to departments based on their usage and the size and the number of their buildings into this fund. This is one area where the FTEs are expanding. There will be two new FTEs, one to focus on custodial work and one to focus on deferred maintenance. And in order to support those costs, there is, there was needed to be an increased cost to all of the departments, which for the general fund equated to $84,000 and that's spread across all of the departments. And then for the other funds, it varies depending on the fund, which you can find on the detail sheets. One important clarification with that is that when we started off with our base budgets in the beginning of this year, each department was charged with coming in with a flat budget. So if we increased their fleet fees or their facility, their IT fees, they had to cut a lot of items internally just to keep their budget flat. So that's really where we started the year and we had a lot of due diligence within ourselves to be able to come in with the budget that we did. Any questions on that one? Engineering TSG fees, again, this is kind of another internal charge that we pay ourselves. What this is, is that as I explained earlier, related to the Technical Services Group and Public Works, we actually charge the departments that use their services, which for the most part is Public Works, planning and neighborhood relations. They actually pay into the support of that group and since the overall budget increased, so then does the payment to the other groups. All right, the next item, grants contributions to other agencies. Sorry, I didn't see any questions on that. This is, we'll take a minute to talk about this one because this includes, as you can see, $996,000. This is a very big, important line item. What this item is usually used for is the kinds of things that we're paying out to other agencies to provide services. First of all, this includes our payment for the downtown redevelopment incentive program, which last year was increased to $300,000 and actually in this budget, it's staying at that level. So it's the same amount as prior years and we can provide and we have information for what that's been used so far in 2016. This also would include the payment for arts. So last year, $30,000 was added to the budget. So last year, $30,000 was added to the budget, and it was granted to Arts Connect, and we have maintained that same level in this budget. The reason primarily that you're seeing an increase in the 2017 budget is partially related to the youth and social service grants. So you will see a report from the ECD committee. They actually just recently approved that, and there was built into that an increase to the amount that we're paying out for external agencies. As you're probably aware, this is just shy of $800,000 if you look at the general fund and CDBG, so our federal funds combined, and we do lots of good work out in the community to multiple different social service agencies. So there is a slight increase to that amount. And then in addition, there is included in there $50,000 to support the riverfront development. This is a new item to the 2017 budget that speaks to initiative of the community. Any questions on that line item?
Councilwoman clear.
We will go through these each individually deeper, right? This is just like an overview, or do we need to ask our deeper questions now?
I'd say ask them now. I mean, or, okay, sorry. You don't have to. If you would like to ask them later, I can do it as a follow-up. No pressure that you have to ask them now, but unless you indicate that there's an item that you'd like to speak about, we don't necessarily have it as a specific item. So whether it be now or in an email.
So we're not going to go through like city council, go through?
Not individually.
Okay, give me a minute. Sorry. Where would this number, what department would this number be under?
Sure. Okay, so that's in the public works department, and in anticipation of your question, it's on page 76. Well, 76 is where the public works department is, and then what you would do is you would go to the line item detail. So for example, that one would be on page?
81.
81, exactly. Sorry, that's actually page 82, and it's the line 53, 700, contribution to other agencies.
So I guess I'm all for the riverfront development, yay. But who decided or what, how, why all of a sudden do we say let's put $50,000 in for that?
Deputy City Manager.
Deputy Mayor, Councilwoman, we had staff routinely attend riverfront development meetings, both on the park side and the weir side, for lack of a better term. And we had conversations with that group where they requested that we might have some consideration towards putting some funds in the budget, and so we put those in there. We also had some council suggest that adding those funds might be a good idea. We benefit significantly from the support that they provide us. They're able to help us locate grants and coordinate and lobby and do a lot of stuff that we're not able to do. So it's a pretty good cost-benefit ratio, we would say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gerber. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just, along that very same line, I think much of the success effectiveness with being able to repair the river levees has been accomplished by the work of Pat Downs, who is a consultant hired by the Riverfront Authority to what, and his connections with the Corps of Engineers and at the federal level, has been very successful in moving this along that we have been working at for a number of years. So again, I think it's a, $50,000 is a small contribution towards what the city is receiving in response to their efforts.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you. And as TGT Chair, we have worked diligently with the Overland Station, Beth Fager, Betty Allen, and there is, you know, this development of this area needs to go forward, and there has been some money that has been held back, as I understand it, from the TGT funds that will help in this development.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none?
The next item, administrative fee. That's kind of an internal, this is actually where we put support for our Intelltime timekeeping system. So we have a charge that every employee, we charge that department for the support of our system. And on this one, it's not actually increasing by that amount. Actually, our payment for the Intelltime system is pretty much flat with 2016, but we were simply having departments all budget it in the same place in 2017, so it stands out, but really before it had kind of been scattered around departments. The next item here, maintenance, building and grounds. And again, this one is actually, would be on page 82, as long with the other one. This is also a new item to the budget. This is in support of our contract with the Downtown Foundation to provide downtown maintenance. This actually is going to be an agenda item, I think on June 21st, so you'll be hearing a lot more about that. But if you'd like to, would you like to get into it now? Or would you like to ask any questions about that?
Any questions from the body? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Sure, I'd like to hear it now. But we're talking, this is our, part of our budget, so I would like to discuss it now, with all due respect.
Deputy Mayor, Councilwoman, we put this cost in the budget in anticipation of a potential contract with DTF Downtown Topeka Foundation to make payments to them for downtown park maintenance. As you're aware, this was going to be an agenda item, but it has been removed from the June 21st agenda so that we can have additional conversations, particularly with some folks from DTF and with this body. As you're aware, we do have a park maintenance contract right now, and that park maintenance contract says that after the project is complete, after the public and private enhancements are complete, the city will accept for maintenance, as we do with all projects of this type. We accept public, and we accept things in our right of way for maintenance. The contract says that. The contract also states that in anticipation of costs for maintenance, DTF will pay the city $250,000, and the city will maintain maintenance for a period of 20 years. We've been having conversations with DTF about the possibility of flipping that model on its head, and that instead of the city, the city would still accept those parks for maintenance, but then we would turn around and contract that maintenance with DTF for a variety of reasons. It makes sense. It's, you know, they're responsible for downtown happenings, and so it makes sense for them to take care of it. And so instead of them paying us $250,000, we've been talking with them about the potential of paying them an amount over 20 years that stair steps and in the end, you saw the aggregate total, it's about $1.2 million over 20 years for maintenance.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
You know, when we had the mediums downtown, who, and parks and, was it DTI or was it Parks and Recs or was it the city that, who takes care of the flowers and everything downtown now?
Well.
And I guess the reason why I'm, I guess the reason why I'm asking, if you can come back to me on that, is because, you know, I see a city truck out there, and then I, you know, watering the flowers, and then I see, you know, I see different activity and different people.
Councilwoman Ortiz, there is a partnership, part of the work is done by the city of Topeka. Another part of it is done by the Business Improvement District that is managed by Downtown Incorporated.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This one might be a good one to parking lot, if you will. I think, you know, WPC, Water Pollution Control, takes care of the plantings on Jackson. We found out that the islands on 8th Street had fallen between the cracks, and neither the state nor the city was taking care of them this year. There were questions and always have been, who's watering the flowers, who's cleaning the sidewalks? It might help us to even have a little map because there are so many moving parts, as well as an explanation of, you know, the Business Improvement District is an assessment to the businesses there, and some of the routine maintenance, like snow shoveling, and I don't know about the watering, really comes out of that. If we could see where the different parts are applied and then see an itemization, it might help when we have the discussion.
Is there consensus on the body on parking lotting this and having more information?
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Yes, Madam Chair. I believe there's not only consensus that we need to look at this, but with the new plaza, there was in the contract that we had, or the application that we had, that there would be some maintenance by county Parks and Rec at some time. So I think we need to start looking at the big picture. I know out in my district, I see city crews out there with the roundabouts doing some of the maintenance and that type of thing, but if we're going to have a plaza that's maintained by the county, we need to start getting on the same page as to who's doing all of the maintenance for our park-like areas.
Thank you.
And I think that would be, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that'd be very educational to the public because when we set money in the budget, they scream when they see this large amount, but when they get a better understanding of who's doing what and what we've done in the past and thusforth, I don't think they, I just think we need to educate them. I don't think they get that clear understanding.
Councilwoman clear.
You said this was in the contract that we would do this? Which contract, contract with whom about what?
Councilwoman clear. If you could answer, but if we could go back to the parking lot so that we could just have all of that information marked back to us in detail, and that way for the next budget meeting or the next council meeting even, depending, we could just go ahead and go into it further into detail.
So we get copy of that?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Deputy Mayor, there's an existing contract for maintenance for downtown. We've been having discussions about the possibility of changing the model, which we'll bring that to you.
City Manager Colson.
Yeah, and thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just to clarify, Councilmember Claire, so back, this goes back in previous history when the decision was made to go forward with Kansas Avenue project. That was one of the side agreements as to how do you maintain those things that are going to get built? Who's responsible for it? So there was an agreement that was reached as a part of that original discussion. Now that we've had a couple of years to live with it, we have a better feel for the repair and replacement requirements, timetables for that. We're able to have a more informed conversation. But I think a parking lot and a more detailed presentation will make both this body feel comfortable, and I agree with Councilmember Ortiz, it will also make the residents feel more comfortable.
Anything else? Okay, we continue.
Next is what's called contractual services. What this line has historically been used for is our cost of elections. That's something that we actually budget non-departmental, and it's an item that varies up and down each year depending on whether it's an election year, how many seats are up. So pretty much what happens when we have an election is the county sends us a bill for what portion of that election was due to city costs. At this time, we are increasing it, although it's a little bit unknown because of the change of elections with them happening in the fall. We're not exactly sure yet or have an agreement with the county on how much we'll be paying because the ballots will be different than they have in prior years. However, since there will be so many people up for election, we did bump up that cost.
Questions? Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You might want to look back. My recollection is that figure's been over $100,000 in past election years, and so if there are some economies because of technology and so on, that's good, but that's less.
Sure. So to answer that, that's exactly it. We have been looking back, and actually for the past couple of years, even with our elections being on their own, we've been spending a lot less than the $100,000. So we haven't, you're right, though. Last time we did have a major election, it was $100,000. And so we did modify that dollar amount down based on really the past four years of history. Thank you, though.
Great question. Thank you very much. Okay, we proceed.
Okay. Last data, internet connections. This one goes up 32,000, as you can see, in this year. What this is, this is the cost that departments pay for any kind of data or internet lines that they have, or also if they're making any payments for iPads, for Air cards, for that kind of a thing, anything related to internet or data is charged to this line item. It's not necessarily that we're increasing our expenses in this area, it's simply that a lot of departments weren't really budgeting appropriately for that. It's one of those costs that kind of snuck up with them. Again, this was a cost, though, if departments did increase them, they had to find another item to decrease to account for that.
Any questions?
Okay. One impact to our, one increase to our commodities, so our commodities, this is an area, and you'll see it as we go down below and talk about cost decreases, things like fuel and some other commodities we've actually been seeing a decrease to. One area of increase would be related to our maintenance of some of our equipment. So this is specifically in the police department to get on a maintenance schedule for our tasers and our cameras. We reallocated money to this account, and again, similar to the answer previously, TPD had to decrease another account to make up for this account. So when you isolate it, it looks like it's increasing, but really something else had to give in order to increase dollar amounts in this area.
Councilwoman clear.
Do we now have cameras for all the police officers?
Yes.
We're bringing in Chief Brown.
We currently have 207 body-worn cameras distributed to our law enforcement officers and several fire department investigators that also operate off of our line.
Do you need more?
207 is a good amount right now for all of the units in which are the true first responders. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Councilwoman Ortiz, did I see your hand?
I was killing a spider. Sorry.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Ortiz for saving us from that horrible tragedy that could have occurred. My question relates to the body-worn cameras. I know, at least I've read in the news, some departments are struggling with storage requirements to handle all that video data that they're retaining. Are you doing okay with that?
Yes, sir. So when we first started, we just had a few cameras, and then we went to a couple dozen, then we had 100, and then we redid our policy last February to mandate body-worn cameras for all calls for service, which is a great thing for Topeka PD, and it's a great thing for our community.
Absolutely.
So this $34,000 increase is going to help pay for that storage in the cloud. This is very new to law enforcement. There's not a template out there.
Yes.
So we're kind of leading the charge in Kansas for Topeka. We didn't anticipate that much of increased usage of body-worn cameras, but it's very expensive to store that information in the cloud. So there's federal laws and state laws and how long we have to keep that information. So that was the unanticipated cost. That was completely my fault. I didn't, I didn't think that it would be that much, but it was, so we had to find some room within our current budget to fix that.
Excellent. Thank you.
City Manager Colson.
One of the models that we've tried to follow, certainly on Kansas Avenue and other things, is that when we do something, we look for private partners who are very much entrusted in making Topeka a better community. And in this particular case, Security Benefit stepped up in a very big way and purchased, what was the number, 100?
Yeah, $100,075,000. So without those generous donations, it would be a little bit more devastating to the budget because we have such a generous community and individuals like Security Benefit and others that have donated money. It definitely helps with our cost for storage of that information.
Thank you, Security Benefit, for your support.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. This is a great, great example on how our city continues to draw on those public-private partnerships and the benefit that it derives. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Do we ever use those segues anymore? I know DTI was real big in getting us a couple of those.
They do. They do train, qualify, and use those at special events. They're kept here at police headquarters down the basement, and the officers that are certified to ride them are out there and about on, in different community events.
I used to see them downtown, and I don't see them anymore, just not on special events, and that's why I asked if they were around anymore, so.
Yes, ma'am. We still do have them, and officers still do ride them.
And we're happy to set up training for you if you want to do that.
Well, you know, in all seriousness, I thought it was nice to see, you know, and I know manpower, but, you know, I used to see them during the week, you know, with all the businesses downtown, or people down, working people downtown, and it was nice to see him kind of come down, you know, and patrol, and I'd like to see that again, Chief Brown, you know.
I will fix that.
You know, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's really kind of nice because you never know, it's just another angle that an officer's coming down there.
You're right.
Especially with us just passing no bikes and skateboarders on the, on, you know, on Kansas Avenue. Have, oh, God, well, can he go down? Oh, God, well, can he go down Kansas? But I'm just saying, it's, it's kind of nice to see him, and, and, you know, he'd kind of stop and talk, and, but he was on his, on the move, so.
Got it.
City Manager Colson, yes.
So, much like Judge Geyer, we're sort of teleprompting what we're going to talk about next week, but one of the comments that was made on Tuesday night was the specialized police actions and security and other activities for downtown. So in about a week, when Chief Brown and I get together and have this conversation, you might prep for that.
Thanks for heads up, Councilmember.
We should teach City Manager how to ride that skateboard.
I ride a skateboard.
Thanks very much.
We'd have to get an awful large helmet.
Any other questions with regards to this line item for Chief Brown or for the staff? This is wonderful that we're able to have fun, thank you. Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Heller.
Deputy Mayor, could we back up one, just, just for a moment?
Yes, ma'am.
We've been doing a lot of changing in phone systems, as I understand it, and, and I know we've been moving people around, and, and then also lots of computer replacements been going on. I recall that earlier in my first term, there'd been lots of change, and we discovered that we had phone lines that were not being used, we had computers that were, we were paying maintenance on that really weren't being used, they were stacked up. Not necessarily for today, unless it's a quick answer, but could we be reassured that there is a, a policy and process in place that's making sure that we're only paying these data costs for things that are actively in use? I mean, back in those early years, 2009, 2010, when I first started on council, of course, everything was tanking, so it was real tough to get a computer. And, and so now things have opened up a little more, I just want to make sure, be reassured that we've got some governors on that system.
Sure, if you don't mind, then I think we will follow up with an answer to that. And then also, on the 28th, when we plan to talk about the other funds, maybe we can take a deeper dive into IT if necessary, because they would be, they're the ones that manage both of those telephone and computers.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Heller. Any other questions so that we can keep on moving forward? Just, just as a housekeeping, I know that certain council members have let me know that they may be leaving, so if you see some council members go, they do have some activities that they have to tend to that were prior scheduled to this meeting, so.
Okay. Now getting down to significant expenditure, expenditure decreases, as you can imagine, in order to come in with a flat budget, in order to increase the items we just addressed, we also needed to decrease some items. So first of all, a lot of these are very good stories. Motor fuel, that's one that every year we look at the projections, and we make an assumption on where prices will be, and based on prior year usage and based on projections right now, overall, in the general fund, we're hoping to see, we budgeted about $90,000 less than the prior year.
Seeing no questions, please continue.
Next would be prisoner care payment to Shawnee County. So what this is, is that when the city has a prisoner, we actually get a bill from the county pertaining to that individual. And each year, we look at the prior year actuals before we set this budget amount, and this is actually an area that our overall costs have been going down. It's not necessarily a reflection, reflection in a change of process, it's more, last, I'd say in other years, there's philosophy on how much you budget in this line, how much kind of extra you build into this line, and for the past couple of years, we've been kind of pretty much feeling more comfortable decreasing that. So again, this isn't mandating that we're doing something differently necessarily in this regard, it's simply reflecting how much we've actually been spending.
Questions? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. This next one, allowable's reimbursables, so there's a really general answer, that's a very general kind of catch-all account. And overall, this particular line item saw a, saw a decrease, but it's more departments spreading those costs to other areas, so it's not that we're doing less of these types of things, it's simply that we're reflecting them in different accounts that kind of fit the category more specifically rather than just a general allowable.
Go ahead.
Maintenance machinery and equipment, this is an account that we use traditionally to support, as it says, any kind of, if, if a department has to pay for machinery and equipment related to their department. This is an area that we actually, several departments, including finance and then Public Works, actually decreased this to use in other areas. So for example, in finance, this is where we use the budget to pay for software like Socrata. And then in Public Works, this was specifically in the TSG group that now we're using more for, shifted it to contractual software support rather than for maintenance of machinery.
Okay.
Okay, KPNF contributions, so simpler, similar to the capers rate, KPNF is actually seeing a decrease. It's going from 20.42% to 19.52%, and with such a large group that we pay KPNF on, any kind of decrease in the rate sees an overall really large savings to the budget. So that's why you see a decrease to that line item there. This next one here, labor contract pool, this is kind of, I'd say, a holding place for where we're at with certain contracts. So for example, last year, if you remember, when we were solidifying the budget, we were in the midst of negotiating quite a few contracts, and we still had, I think, five contracts that were up in the air at this point in the budget. So we used this line item last year for 462,000 to put that pool of funds that we know we will be spending towards contracts, but we don't yet know exactly when and where. This year, that's actually a lesser amount of those kind of unknown costs, so that's why you see that decrease in that line item, but really, this is an amount of money that we spend on full-time salaries once certain items are settled.
Any questions with regards to this line item? Seeing none, we can proceed.
Capital Outlay Motor Vehicles. This area, most of the decrease relates to two departments. One would be neighborhood relations. If you remember, in the 2016 budget, we had a, a one-time increase for adding equipment related to the special structures unit. So we added two new positions last year, and we increased the demolition fund. Just so you know, both of those areas, we have, we've kept flat in the 2017 budget. We haven't decreased or increased either of those. It's the same number of FTEs, same amount for demolition funding. But one area we were able to decrease is that in 2016, we bought some new equipment and some new vehicles for those new positions that, of course, we don't need to buy brand-new every year, so we were able to decrease this amount. And this has also decreased in the police department related to their vehicles.
Questions? We can proceed.
Okay. The next one is really a, kind of a technical entry, as I've explained, for our Technical Services Group and Public Works, their budget actually looks like a zero because we charge out all of their expenses. So since their overall budget is increasing, then that negative offsetting amount also increase, is also increasing. So it's not necessarily savings to the budget, it's just accounting for an increase to count for that unit. So the last item here, vacancy credits, this is probably the one, the most significant item on this list. Vacancy credits, this is a tool that the city has used in multiple past years of budgets, so really for every year other than the 2016 budget, there has been some amount of vacancy credits budgeted in. What this is, is this is a way for accounting for naturally occurring vacancies throughout the city. So our personnel budget in the general fund is the biggest part of our budget, and throughout the course of the year, you're naturally going to not have all of those positions filled at a certain point of time. So this is a way of offsetting that amount and kind of claiming those savings that you will have. This is not just in full-time salaries, but also in benefits, and all of the health benefits, retirement benefits that you pay. So when you're saving on an employee, you're also saving that 30% of benefits that you would have been paying for that employee.
And if I could add a statement, and please, if you could clarify, having these vacancy credits does not mean that we will have any department at a deficit, it just means that when positions become open, there is natural attrition that will take care of that, realizing those savings without having a negative impact, adverse impact on the, on the staffing units, is that correct?
Yes, thank you for clarifying. We're putting this, this is a citywide goal, so this is not a goal that's specific to police or specific to fire, or specific to the other departments. This is really for every department will contribute to this, and this is not a specific target. We're not mandating that you will hold position vacant, or you will not fill that position to meet this goal. We feel comfortable that this amount of money, we'll naturally hit this amount of money of savings standing still just from the course of action throughout the year.
Thank you very much. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is an issue that we spent a lot of time talking about, and as our, one of our policies from a financial perspective was to try to reflect the reality of the organization. There's a natural ebb and flow of people coming in and leaving the organization, and there's generally a time gap between those things. So as Nikki said very appropriately, this isn't a targeted goal of us that we're going to achieve certain savings by holding positions open longer, this is just a reflection of the reality. And one of the things that we've done successfully for the last several years, and you've all seen it, and we benefited from it, is we've, we've generally recouped about five to six million dollar savings at the end of every year. That's fantastic, but it's not really phenomenal budgeting. I mean, it's, it's phenomenal for us, but what we would really like to do is kind of end that year right exactly where we said we were going to budget, and this is another one of those fine-tuning opportunities. It's sort of like your choice in terms of paying taxes, do you pay more so you get a big, a big check at the end, or do you try to figure this thing out so that you end up with, with zero? This is that move for us to try to more accurately reflect how labor flows through this organization.
Thank you, City Manager, for your comments. Councilwoman Clear.
So, I understand that this is what has happened over time. So what would happen to the budget if all those people were hired and we didn't have any vacancies? Would we then be minus the million dollars?
So I, I think that's a fair question. This is based on historical data, but let's say we had the unicorn event where we stayed 100% same throughout the year. Yeah, you could, you could find yourself in a situation where you needed to identify those, those savings within the organization. Now, we, that would never happen to us because every month, we're taking a look at revenues and expenditures, and we make adjustments going forward. So let's just say that we had that unicorn event, and it was the, it was the end of the second quarter, we would start making the necessary adjustments of that, of that saving. So as I say, we spent a lot of time talking about it, and this is a, this is different than what we've done in the past, but we think it's more reflective of how our budget operates.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, and I kind of have the opposite of that question. Have any cities looked at, like what AT&amp;T did and other big companies with early buyout, which what you do then is you pay out for early retirement, and then when you hire back in, you're hiring at a much less rate because you've been able to pay less for new people right out of college.
So Deputy, I, I.
City Manager.
Sorry. We have some history with that, and we, we did something somewhere in 2010, and we ultimately hired most, we hired a lot of those positions back on a contractual basis and actually spent more for it. But I, I mean, I would be happy to have Jackie come forward and, and give a little bit of a history of that and what that would mean within this organization. But I would also suggest if it is a topic that we want to get into in, in greater detail, that maybe we could put it in the parking lot. But I think it's more, I think it's a, I think we could talk about it from a historical perspective and from a theoretical perspective.
I know a lot of large companies do that, an early buyout.
Mm-hmm, and, and absolutely, if we could have Jackie make some statements, but this is, this is a big strategy type of, of discussion, so.
Good morning, everyone. In 2010, as Mr. Colson said, we did have what we called a retirement incentive, and so those individuals that were eligible to retire under the capers retirement system were offered an incentive that included a greater percentage of their sick leave being paid out, and they also were able to receive up to five years of healthcare, employee-only premium paid totally by the city. And so, as Mr. Colson did say, a lot of those positions, we needed to hire back on a contractual basis to continue services. The healthcare expense ended up being very tremendous, carrying that liability for the, that number of years. And so I think that, off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I don't have specific numbers for you, but certainly that's something that we could follow up with. But from an HR perspective, I think we would need to evaluate that total cost, the impact on the services, and then what gains there may be from an incentive like that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Russell. Any other questions with regards to this? Knowing that we are going to parking lot it, and we, we do look forward to a deep dive on this issue. Councilwoman Jensen.
Is this sort of a buyout thing, something we're planning to do this year, or is this just general discussion of the strategy if we needed it?
At this point in time, I would say that a strategy discussion so that we could, for future years, see how this would operate.
Okay.
Councilwoman Heller.
Personally, and we can, any answers, okay, but I'm not sure we do need to do that. We did do that procedure in 2010. If you look around this room and you think about the last five years, a lot of our senior people in management, as well as in police and fire, have already gone. They're retiring, that's one of the reasons we have the challenge with the retirement fund and in keeping up with that, and we have a lot of young, new leadership staff, as well as frontline staff, and so I, I'm not sure that's really something we want to spend a whole lot of time on this year, but, but I'm open.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
I would like us to look at the idea of not using contractual, but, you know, what the other large companies that do this would be to, you have your retirees who have long years of service with, with a lot of retirement pay to, to get them to retire early, and then you don't contract with new employees, you contract, you hire new employees at a much lower rate. And I know that it is still working in many different areas with many different companies that they still have early buyout.
And this is why this would be a strategy, taking a look at the strategy of what we're utilizing.
In the parking lot.
Good, good way of taking a look at what we're doing currently, just to make sure that we continue improving, like City Manager said. Yes, City Manager?
Yeah, and so I think that's always a concept in taking a look at, at, at how you manage HR policy. I would make a suggestion that as, instead of it being part of the budget discussion this year, because it's not part of the budget discussion here, maybe it's something that we put as an initiative that we evaluate and come back as part of a larger HR discussion for later on.
Absolutely. Is there consensus by nod of heads that this is a topic that we would like to look at? Okay, so we can proceed. Thank you very much, Ms. Russell.
It was yes, but not in the budget.
Yes, yes, but not in the budget.
One other thing I did want to add to Councilwoman Clear's question is that this one million dollars is even still a conservative number, so usually, we save three to four million easily in personnel costs. So as City Manager explained, yes, if it did happen that we could be fully staffed, that would be great, and we would have to account for this, but usually, we actually hit a lot more than this number. Okay, and then getting into some of our revenues, as was explained, in order to be able to afford some of the increases in the budget, you also have to have naturally occurring revenues. One would be property tax, and as was explained, we are not projecting an increase to the mill levy, however, just through the course of assessed valuations going up, naturally, we're expecting about a 2% increase, and this is with a lot of work with the county to estimate what that amount will be. Of course, this amount is finalized after July 1st, but at this point, we are expecting to see a little bit of increase in overall assessed valuation, which does increase our property tax revenues.
Okay.
You will see two development services line items on here. One is for permits, and one a little bit down lower is licenses. So these are related to our building permits, and then our licenses for, that we give for when companies and buildings are building around the city. For a couple of years, we have been seeing this number rebound, it's one that, of course, with the economic crisis, took a big dive, so for the past couple of years, we've been budgeting very conservatively in these areas. However, this year, we felt like we've had enough history with the last three years of increased amounts, that we've increased this budget amount to reflect actuals that we saw in 2015, and we fully expect in 2016 and 2017 to meet those and hopefully even exceed those amounts.
Wonderful. Seeing no questions, we can proceed.
Both sales tax and franchise fees a little bit lower, these are both revenue These are both revenues that, for the past couple of years, and we've stayed consistent this year. We are projecting a 1% increase in both of those areas. We believe that's a very conservative amount, and we do naturally expect growth in both of those areas. Franchise fee, of course, that's the amount of money that we get paid from the utilities based on the revenue that they gain, so if they're getting more due to consumption or doing, due to rate increases, then we also expect an increase in our revenues.
Seeing no questions? Yes, Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We're below expected budget revenues right now in franchise fees, per our report the other day. So you're thinking that nonetheless, we'll exceed budget by the, when it's all washed out?
Sure, so to answer to that, franchise fees is an area that you see extreme fluctuation, really because it's based on usage, it's based on weather. So what we do is, we don't look just at one year, but we look at really the past five years. So looking at that longer term gave us a lot of comfort in that item. But you are correct that in 2016, so far, we are down in that area. There's just so many factors that contribute to that, that really, we wouldn't want to look just at this year, but we do go into it eyes wide open, and that's an area that we watch very, very carefully, and especially in 2017. If we do continue to see that kind of a decrease, then it is something that we might need to make some kind of internal adjustment for.
Deputy City Manager.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. I might add very briefly, this is another one of those items that we've had significant staff discussion about, and a lot of times, most times, when we set revenues and expenditures, we try to look back at a good history. But in this particular case, what happened in March of 2015 has exactly zero to do with what's going to happen in March of 2016, because the weather is what it is, and so that makes it more difficult to predict. But based on potential rate increases and just generally increased usage, we're very comfortable with this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We can proceed.
The next item is interest earnings. So that's an area that, of course, with the economic state, we have been seeing a lower amount for the past couple of years, but in 2015, we did start to see those interest earnings increase, partially because we've got more that we're earning it on. This is also just based on rates and based on what we earned last year. We felt comfortable increasing this amount based on our final numbers from last year. Next, you see an inter-fund admin fee. We spent a lot of time talking about this last year. What this is, is that, this is a cost allocation of the services that the general fund provides to other funds. So, for example, finance, legal, council office, everything pretty much out of City Hall, are services that are provided citywide, and we actually, per a cost allocation study, charge out the other departments to pay into that. This amount prior to 2016 was really higher than it needed to be. So the general fund needed a larger amount from those other funds, just to get to a healthy point. So last year, in 2016, we actually decreased this amount by, I think it was just under $1 million, to, again, bring it to where it should be and to alleviate the pressure on the other funds. So each year, we'll redo the cost allocation study, and you can see that in 17, it's actually a little bit of a bump off of 16, mainly based on the number of FTEs and a couple of other factors in other funds, but overall, we're still down from where we were prior to 2016.
Any questions with regards to this line item? Okay, seeing none? And Mr. City Manager?
When Nikki talks about other funds, she's primarily referencing utility funds, and so this is just another example of trying to make sure the costs that are borne by the utilities are appropriate for what they should be.
Thank you. Okay, we can proceed.
Okay, and the last one, auto property tax. This is one that we're actually projecting a pretty significant decrease from 2016. This is actually an estimate that we get from the county, and this is the amount of property tax that people pay on their vehicles each year, and this reflects simply what the county provided to us, which is down quite a bit from the prior year, and we'd probably expect that 2017 amount would be kind of our new normal, and we'd be seeing a decrease in this area, probably from here on out.
Okay, yes. Councilwoman Heller.
Why is that? Why the decrease?
Councilwoman Heller, let me follow up. Actually, yesterday, I realized I hadn't had a really good conversation yet with the county. We get, one of the reasons for the budget book getting to you so late is that we get these kinds of estimates from the, from the county, they're kind of our last pieces of information, and we haven't really had a good conversation with them on that. But let me follow up with you on that, once we have a better understanding.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, we are going to have, from Ms. Lee, a fund overview of the general fund, unless we have any comments or questions? We're on the home stretch, my friends.
Okay, so that's what we just did. That was the general fund overview. At this point in time, maybe take a minute clarifying kind of our plan for the next meeting, if that's okay? So from here going forward, what I would expect to happen would be that, of course, we will follow up with you, hopefully before the beginning of the next meeting, we'll send you a Q&amp;A reflecting all of the questions that were brought up today, and if any other questions come between now and then, maybe via email, we can include those as well. On the 15th, we plan to spend the majority of the meeting talking about infrastructure, specifically streets. So we want to give you an update on the items that were added last year, the aid equipment operators, the additional budget amount that we included for street maintenance, street lights, all of those items that we increased for 16. We think it'd be important to circle back with you in the next meeting and also clarify what you see in the 17 budget related to those areas. So you will see that official agenda come out with those specific items. And then again, on the 28th, we will continue to focus on all of the other funds and the other major issues that we haven't yet gotten into.
Does the body have any further questions or comments about today? And, yes, Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nikki, the last two years, we've had a graph that shows the dollar bill with the general fund. Can we get that again this year? It's very helpful to understand and see what percentages of that dollar bill go where.
So actually, thank you for asking that. It's actually the very last page of your binder and of the budget book, page 207, in anticipation of your question. That's in the back of the book, and traditionally, what that's been is a reflection of, by category, what most of our budget is, and the public safety number this year is 72%. But actually, last year, you brought up another really good point that's very, very important for us to keep in front of us, is that this isn't just the general fund, this is a $270 million budget with a lot of other funds. And when you look at all those other funds combined, you can see that actually, the majority of our budget is spent on infrastructure. So 48% of our budget, when you look at everything, including utilities, streets, is spent on infrastructure. You know, when you look at just the general fund, that number looks pretty low, because most of that money is spent out of other areas. So hopefully, this chart answers your questions from the start, and we'll include this just from here on out, it'll be in your budget book from the start.
That's really great to have the general fund and all other funds. That's super. Thank you.
Any other questions for the good of the order? Yes, Mr. Emerson.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are we actually going to go through the next pages of the expenditure summary and the revenue summary today, or?
So those ones, we weren't actually planning on walking through. We will hit up each of those funds as we go through the other meetings, but we weren't planning on walking through it. Of course, if you have any specific questions, we can do that.
I guess just a general question. So you're showing, we're showing $267 million in expenditures, then you go over to the revenue summary, $246 million, which looks like it's like $21 million in red. Is that correct?
Sure, so that's, thank you for asking that. That's a good question, that's kind of brought up every year. Generally, revenues match expenses in most funds, because, of course, you don't want to spend more than you make. But anywhere where we're showing a fund spending more than the revenue, it's because there's either a cash balance there that's available to spend, or there's a specific reason or an anticipated expense increase for an isolated incidence. So if you actually look through the budget book by fund, there's an explanation for each time that our expenses are higher than revenues. Let me just give you one example, for example, in the countywide half-cent sales tax, you'll see about a $13 million revenue and a $23 million expense. That's because $10 million is the excess countywide sales tax funds, that's a holdover from phase one of the tax. So we will be spending that in 17, that's money that we've been making for the past 12 years, but we won't be getting that revenue because we already have the revenue. So that's one example where revenue is 10 million less than expenses because we've got that money in the bank. And I'd say in every other incidence, so for example, in the IT fund, you'll see the expenses higher than revenues, because we specifically planned, and with the CIP, we knew we had a couple of major projects in IT that we've been saving money for, that now we're going to go ahead and budget to spend. So I think if you look fund by fund, we explain where revenues are higher, where expenses are higher than revenues, you'll see an explanation as to why. But that's a, last year's budget has had a similar proportion. Additionally, one other really good point of clarification is that you all are setting maximum expenditure authority. We never spend the full amount that you are authorizing. So you're authorizing way more than we ever expect to spend, because that's the point of the budget, is to ask for a maximum amount. We won't spend that whole $267 million.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? City Manager.
So, since we have a few minutes, I know nobody wants to go anywhere. I thought maybe I could just take two or three minutes and get, to address the first question brought out of the gate by Councilmember Schwartz, in terms of the grant writer, just to maybe knock that one off the table. With your permission? Specifically, last year during the session, we talked about the grant writing and the desire, A, to get a grip on what it is that we were doing internally, secondly, to improve that process, and thirdly, it ended up with a specific request to bring in a, to bring in a grant writer. As we worked through that process, we brought in a grant coordinator, somebody to provide training, to provide the foundational backbone to support the grant, the grant-receiving efforts within the city. There was a discussion, and I would not say that there was a, an agreement on council as to whether the way we proceeded was right, wrong, but I admit that it wasn't specifically the same as what was directed by this council. We spent about two months taking a look at it, understanding that the objective was to improve the city's posture pertaining to receiving grants, competing, identifying, competing for, and receiving grants. And I think that we're on the way to doing that. As a result of that conversation, what we've done is we've sort of reoriented the process, and we've changed the relationship with coordinator to be a much lesser relationship, to provide that foundation, provide that training. We're in the process right now of hiring a grant writer who can work very closely with the departments, understanding that a lot of the specific work that's going to be done from a grant-writing perspective really needs to be done at a departmental level because of the specific knowledge that one would have to have. And our initial idea was that we would, we would provide them the training and the assistance, otherwise. We think the approach that we're taking right now does both of those things, provides the foundational approach, but it also provides somebody who can step in and be the expert writer and develop that person. So I think that's consistent with the goal that this body sent, more consistent. Secondly, I think it really provides all of the tools that this, that this organization needs to continue to grow our grant activities. And by the way, our grant activities are fairly strong, we just want to continue to make it stronger. So unless there's more, a need for more information, I would hope that that suffices where we're at today.
Yes, Councilwoman Cleare.
So did they, were, were we able to get funding from any grants that were written last year? From this person, or was it each individual?
A combination of both, but more understanding that it was really, we're only a few months into that person. I think we're capturing data, I think we're in the competitive loop now for some of those positions. I can't say with certainty as to whether we could go back and say, this one happened only because of that person, I think. And when I talked to them about it, they kind of looked at me like, well, what are you crazy? I mean, we just started this thing. But we will do another update on the grants fairly soon within, to this body.
Okay. Well, I want to thank everybody for being here today. City Manager, you have a unicorn here, in case we have a unicorn event. I know that Councilwoman Schwartz was doing roast butts, she was practicing for a wedding cake that she's doing. I want to really say thank you as well to our Chief Brown and to the staff of the TPD. They have opened their home to us in order for us to have a meeting, and not only that, but they have also provided our snacks. So thank you very much to the TPD and their team for hosting us here today and making sure that we always feel safe when we're doing these processes. So with that, thank you very much, council members. We are out, yes, Ms.
Food trucks, food truck event today.
Oh, yeah.
That's where I'm headed. Gage Park.
Gage Park, food trucks, my friends, so go from here, there. So that being said, thank you very much, and I look forward to serving with you next time.
Next Wednesday.
Have a good one.
And next Thursday.